I'd like to call on March 18th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. First order of business would be the invocation by Mr. David Cotton, our county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Please bless us with wisdom, guidance, and your leadership as the board deliberates the items on tonight's agenda. Bless our social workers, who we honor here this evening for their dedication to our community. Lord, equip them with the professionalism and relational resources they need to continue making an impactful change as a work to build better lives. Father, we pray for the men and women in our armed forces, who serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. We will continue to thank you and praise you for the blessings you have bestowed upon us. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, hear us in a moment of silence. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Pledge allegiance by Ms. Sharon Russell, our deputy county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize Sheriff Miller, our Onslow County Sheriff. Thank you, sir, for being here tonight. We ask all in attendance to please set your cell phone to silent or vibrate mode. The board offers two public opportunities to speak during the meeting. Comments during the first public comment period should be limited to three minutes each and must be directly issue oriented with the agenda items for this particular meeting. The second public comment period is at the end of the meeting and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the board for up to five minutes each. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the board as a whole and not to one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed. In accordance with the board's adopted rules and procedures, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period on the agenda, which is at the end of the meeting. With no other items being considered, a motion to adopt the meeting agenda is in order. A motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Approval of the items on the consent agenda. Is there any board member have anything that they would like to have moved to the last part of the meeting for discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
Motion approved the consent agenda.
Second. We got a second.
Second.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on now to public comment. Mr. Cotton, did anyone sign up for the first public comment? All right, we'll move on to item four, which is presentations. Mr. Cotton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will read the proclamation into the minutes. The first is Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Raise the Age Legislation. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, proclamation Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Raise the Age Legislation. Whereas Juvenile Crime Prevention Council funding is a partnership between the state of North Carolina and the county to ensure a local continuum of services for court-involved and at-risk juveniles. And whereas the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, under authority of North Carolina General Statute 143B, Tech 851, and within the scope of its powers and duties, quote, "Each county council shall annually review the needs of juveniles in the county who are at risk of delinquency or who have been adjudicated, undisciplined, or delinquent, and the resources available to address those needs. In particular, each county council shall assess the needs of juveniles in the county who are at risk and who have been associated with gangs or gang activity and the local resources that are established to address those needs," end quote. And whereas the Juvenile Justice Reinvestment Act passed in 2017, also referenced as North Carolina's Raise the Age Legislation, expands the age of juvenile jurisdiction, increasing it to include juvenile ages 16 and 17 years of age effective December 1, 2019. And whereas Raise the Age Legislation will increase the need for immediate and age-appropriate sanctions and diversion services for juvenile offenders and those at risk of delinquency. And whereas JCPC funding has seen no increase in more than nine years, and whereas the efforts to immediately and effectively address juvenile offending behavior is an evidence-based investment in North Carolina's future, and whereas effective intervention and programming reduces detention and youth development commitments as a cost savings to the state and county. Now therefore be it resolved that Onslow County fully supports an adequate and timely increase of local juvenile crime prevention funding to ensure program expansion and successful implementation of the Juvenile Justice Reinvestment Act Raise the Age Legislation set for December 1, 2019." Ms. Kathleen Holbrook, JCPC Chair, will accept the proclamation. The chairman has requested that Commissioner Foster present the proclamation.
It's a great honor to present this to Ms. Kathleen Holbrook as well as Reverend Joel Churchwell, on behalf of Onslow County and the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. Students, kids, today we have a high expectation, and expectation without support is a prescription for failure. So our students that have, or our kids that have made some difficult decisions in their life and of moving forward, need someone to step in and support them as they're trying to change that path. And if there's not people there to help proceed with that, then we're letting them go down the wrong road continuously. So a big hand for JCPC and what you do there for our youth here in Onslow County. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We wish to thank the commissioners for their support of JCPC. With Raise the Age, we are expecting $8.8 million in the state to be released to the 100 counties, so we are anxiously anticipating the additional funds to Onslow County. Thank you.
I'm Kathleen a long time. Thank you all very much.
Okay, the next proclamation is National Social Work Month 2019. I'll read the proclamation into the minutes. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, proclamation National Social Work Month 2019. Whereas the primary mission of the social work profession is to enhance well-being and help meet the basic needs of all people, especially the most vulnerable in society. And whereas social work is one of the fastest-growing careers in the United States, with more than 640,000 members of the profession. And whereas social workers work in all areas of our society to improve happiness, health, and prosperity, including government, schools, universities, the military, and mental health and healthcare facilities. And whereas this year's Social Work Month theme Elevate Social Work embodies the need to recognize the extraordinary contributions of the profession to our society. And whereas thousands of children, family, and school social workers across the country provide assistance to protect children and improve the social and psychological functioning of children and their families. And whereas social workers work with older adults and their families to improve their quality of life and ability to live independently as long as possible and get access to quality mental health and healthcare. Now therefore be it proclaimed, in recognition of the numerous contributions made by Onslow County's Consolidated Human Services Social Workers, the Onslow County Board of Commissioners acknowledge the month of March 2019 as National Social Work Month and call upon all citizens to join in celebration and support of social work profession. Ms. Heidi Bauer, Social Services Director, Ms. Angela Lee, Healthcare Director, and Consolidated Human Services staff will accept the proclamation. The chairman has asked that Commissioner Shanahan present the proclamation.
So the Department of Social Services and Consolidated Human Services more broadly performs one of the most important functions of our local county government, and they contribute so much themselves to our county, and we're blessed to have them. These are professionals that could be doing a lot of things. They've got a lot of skills and talent, and we're just absolutely blessed as a community that you've chosen to share those with us. And so, thank you very much.
Social work is an interesting career path for people. You're loved and hated all at the same time. Please understand that there are social workers everywhere. If you're ever looking for a helper, it's a social worker. They're in the hospitals, they're in the schools, they're in the nursing homes, they're everywhere you go. And everyone that you meet just wants to help you. So thank you very much for honoring this profession. We really do appreciate it.
Commissioner Knapp has asked to make a comment about the proclamation. Go ahead, sir.
Let me back up. First, I want to say congratulations to Kathleen and Pastor Churchwell. I know what you do on the JCPC. Having sat on that board, your work is highly commendable for all the efforts that you put into it and the dedication. I know both of you, you care extremely about our children. And you know, Kathleen, you and I go way back, working some cases together as far as child abuse is concerned, so my hat's off to you. And Heidi and Angela and Cherry, you're absolutely right. Social work is a thankless job. I've had to deal with a lot of social workers throughout my 27-year career. Some were good, some were bad, but it was all because I knew that they cared for the kids, and you do have a thankless job, and what you guys do is invaluable for the community. And a lot of people don't understand that, and they get on the wrong side and they get upset, and that's part of your job. So I commend you for your efforts, and I applaud your efforts, because you guys do a very honorable thing, working, trying to help families, et cetera. So I applaud both proclamations. I think they're well deserved.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? All right, we'll move on to item five. Ms. Laura Jones, I've got some final offers, I think.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners. The board accepted offers on three properties, and these three properties have already gone through the upset bid process, and since the last publication, we have not received any upset bids. So the final offers are bringing back to you for consideration. The first one is parcel 009247. It's 110 Darden Street. It's .08 of an acre, and the original and the final offer $3,772.18. The second one is 016996 at 335 Queens Road. It's .71 of an acre, and the original offer was $6,400, and the final offer is $18,000. Parcel 046638 on 114 Sherry Street. It's .46 of an acre. The original offer was $4,522.52, and the final high offer is $10,825.1. And if approved, the properties will be sold as is and will prepare our deed to transfer the properties and remove them from the asset file. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Land offer on Section B.
Yes, sir. This is a new offer that the county received in the amount of $5,410. The property is located on Briar Neck Road, and it's referred to as parcel 050099. It's about 5.6 acres inside, but it consists of a long, deep, narrow wooded lot. And again, if approved, we'll go through the upset bid process to sell the property. It's respectfully requested that the board consider the offer in the amount of $5,410 for parcel 05099 and authorize the purchasing director to conduct the sale. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in... Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. We'll say that tonight we've sold a property for $28,597. That goes back into the general fund, and the good thing about it is those properties go back on the tax books to the people that's actually paying property tax. So that's really a good thing for us. Item C, application for public school building capital fund. Mr. McColl?
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. The item you have before you is a lottery fund application in the amount of $1,112,234.68. We've budgeted $1.646 million of lottery-funded fund revenue for fiscal year 1819. The lottery funds will be applied to school debt service on past school construction projects. With that said, I respectfully request the Board of Commissioners authorize the chairman to sign the application for the Public School Capital Building Fund, North Carolina Education Lottery, on behalf of the county.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Next item, I think, is yours also, amendment to the project ordinance, Section D.
Yes, Section D, which is the amendment to the project ordinance, it covers three project ordinances. The first being the Burton Park Infrastructure Project for road extension and utility improvements in Burton Industrial Park, which has been completed. The amendment in the project ordinance has been prepared for review and signature. Overall, the project totaled $1.7 million. $1.1 million was received from a grant fund from the Infrastructure Development Fund. The remaining half a million dollars was a required match refilled by economic development funds, which were held by the county. It was reserved within the county's fund balance, that half a million. The ordinance amendment for this project reduces the budget for both the amount of grant funds received to the amount actually received and expenditures to the amount actually spent in order to close the project. The next project, project ordinance that financiers recommending that we close is the Industrial Building Construction Project, which has been completed for a total of $1.3 million. Funding sources for this project were a donation and economic development funds held by the county. Unspent economic development funds in the amount of $50,638 will be returned to investment in economic development fund balance. The ordinance amendment for this project reduces the budget for both the amount of economic development funds required and expenditures to the amount actually spent in order to close the project. The third project ordinance is the Subtitle D Landfill Phase IV Expansion Project, which has been completed for $7.2 million. The project was funded by the solid waste retained earnings, timber sales, and interest earnings. The ordinance amount prepared to close this project is adjusting and reducing the budget of revenue sources to the actual amount necessary and reducing the budget of landfill construction expense by $568,808. Unspent funds for this project will be returned to the solid waste operating fund. With that said, I respectfully request approval of the Burton Park Infrastructure Improvement Amendment Project Ordinance, the Industrial Building Construction amended project ordinance, and the Subtitle D Landfill Phase IV Expansion Project Ordinance Amendment, and authorize the chairman to sign the three ordinances on behalf of the county.
Motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions for Mr. McColl?
So all three of these projects came in below budget?
Yes, yes, and all those funds will be returned to its proper area within either solid waste fund or within general fund.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Amendments to, under Section E of project ordinance, that's yours also?
Yes, these are two ordinances that we're recommending closing. They're involving our 2016 debt financing that we went to the market for. The first being the Justice Complex Improvement Project, which is complete. It was for havoc improvements to the justice complex, mainly centralized at the jail. The amendment to the project ordinance has been prepared for review and signature. Overall, the project totaled $1.7 million. The project was funded by LOBS, which is limited obligation bonds obtained in 2016, which is part of our debt issuance. The remaining $152,880 will be placed in a reserve account and will be applied to the debt payment after all projects from this financing are complete. There's two projects that we still have to close. One would be Richlands Elementary School, and the other one is actually the courthouse. There's still things that are being done to the courthouse and also Richlands, so we have to reserve these funds and apply them to debt service later on, once those projects are closed. The ordinance amount for this project reduces the budget to the amount actually expended in order to close the project. The other project that we're asking or recommending that we close, or ordinance that we recommend that we close, is the Health and Social Services Demolition and Parking Lot Project. It's been complete. Amendment to the project ordinance has been prepared for review and signature. Overall, the project totaled $2.3 million. The project was funded by, again, limited obligation bonds in our 2016 debt issuance. The remaining $949,234 will be placed in a reserve account and will be applied to debt payments after all projects from this financing are complete. The ordinance amendment for this project reduces the budget to the amount actually expended in order to close the project. With that said, I respectfully request approval of the amendments to the Justice Complex Improvement Project and Health and Social Services Demo and Parking Lot Project for closure and authorize the chairman to sign the ordinances on behalf of the county.
Motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, sir. Interlocal agreement with Richlands for access to the Mobile Data Terminal. Thank you to Sheriff Miller and Norm Bryson.
Good evening, Commissioners. The Town of Richlands Police Department has requested access to the Mobile Data Terminal, otherwise known as MDT, system that currently resides at the county service located at their sheriff's office. The Mobile Data Terminal service provides access into the Interactive Computer Aided Dispatch, otherwise known as CAD, system that the county uses for managing and processing E-911 calls. Law enforcement officers with MDT capabilities can view the dispatch information, have access into the interactive map, view and message other units outfitted with MDTs, research relevant call data, and have a direct message capability to the E-911 center. Granting access to Richlands Police Department for the MDT system will allow for more effective and efficient dispatching of their units. The county and the Town of Richlands have prepared an interlocal agreement for consideration that defines the parameters for Richlands to gain access to the conditions for the use of the system. There's no additional funds, no additional cost to the county for adding Richlands to the license and for the use of the MDT system, and because it is an interlocal agreement with county property, it would be for the board to authorize for them to do it.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
As I understand it, the other municipalities, there are several other municipalities in Onslow County that are using this service?
Yes, sir, there is. Matter of fact, in the previous meeting, we just approved Holly Ridge to get on with the service as well. Now, the Town of Swansboro is also using the same service, but actually getting theirs through the city of Jacksonville, but it's still interfacing with the same system. But yes, there are the municipalities using the system.
And this is our system that I believe we're paying $600,000 a year or so to debt service and maintenance?
That's the 800 megahertz project, so that's on the radio system. This is an entirely different program that is actually, it's web-based, allowing them to have access so that they can use a computer in their vehicle to be able to look up, access information on calls, call history, and communicate with other units.
Okay.
Reduce the response times.
Any further? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, gentlemen. Item six, consent agenda, we didn't have anything moved to the end of the meeting. So now, item seven would be public comment. Have some... Anybody signed up?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is the second public comment period. In accordance with the board's adopted rules and procedures, the commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period on the agenda. Comments may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the board for up to five minutes each. Mr. Noah White of 826 New Bridge Street, Jacksonville?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Noah White. I'm the executive director for the Onslow County Arts Council. You guys have, in the past, supported us, and we've had a kind of a rough year this year, so I wanted to give you an update on what was going on. The hurricane hit us pretty hard and has basically closed us down for about six months now. Prior to that, we had had some building issues that also added into our problem. So there were about two months with no air conditioning in the middle of summer. So we've had a rough year, which has cost us as far as any earned income that we could get in and things of that nature. My board, who I've got, Dr. Playford and Cat Ackerman are with me tonight in support. So basically, what we wanted to let you know is, we do a lot in the community. We bring in the arts and schools program. We have a creative forces military program, which is open to retired and active-duty personnel. It is very popular with us and in our community. We're doing big things with that. So we also do our Art Block Festival each year, which is a street festival that we have right out there on New Bridge Street. This year, we've had to postpone it until September so we can get back on our feet. So basically, what I'm saying to you tonight is, just keep us in mind, we need support. We need support from our community. We need support from our local government as well, and if you can, please keep us in your thoughts, because without support from everyone, it is a very distinct possibility that we may not be here. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Nobody else? All right, we'll move on now to managers' comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I do have one comment. It involves highlighting one of our employees. The Hall Wicker Award was established by the Carolina Association of Government Purchasing in 1996, and it was established to recognize the outstanding contributions and service to the cause and advancement of the purchasing profession. And it also jointly honors two of their late members, Warren "Jake" Wicker and the late WT Tom Hall. And I got to tell you, to be recognized by your peers, there are very few honors that succeed that, and Ms. Laura Jones was honored, what was it, earlier this month at their spring conference, and she was recognized by her peers, and she did receive the Hall Wicker Award. And she asked that I just only use that and not ask her to come up, so... So I did want to highlight that. That's a really huge, you know, thing to be recognized by your peers, you know, across North Carolina. And I will tell you, because she won't, the school of government calls her quite frequently for advice on how to handle, you know, purchasing finance-related items. So she is not just well-respected for her hard work and dedication, it's also her knowledge... So, she is not just well-respected for her hard work and dedication, it's also her knowledge and her prowess in the purchasing realm. So, great job, Laura. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. Next item is Commissioner comments. Commissioner Buchanan?
Thank you there, Mr. Chair. I want to thank Kathleen and Mr. Joel Churchwell for being here tonight as part of the JCPC. I sit on that board also. I want to thank Heidi and Sherry and Angela Lee, our three musketeers out there. I call them that pretty much, because they've done so much for human services, the building, the facility that we have, and what our social service workers do. And just like you said, Heidi, there's a social person someplace helping us do something all the time. And I want to thank you three. You've done so much for this community, and we hate to lose you. Heidi, you're going to retire on us. You've been a great asset to this community. I have enjoyed working for you for the last 15 years, and I hope you enjoy retirement. Everybody, have a safe trip home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just want to reiterate with the JCPC and our social workers, every meeting, it seems like we have something to do with service to others. And I had to look for something to share with that, and that goes to Ralph Waldo Emerson with, you know, often we think life is about making ourselves happy, but the purpose of life is not to be happy. It is to be useful, to be honorable, to be compassionate, to have it make some difference that you have lived, and you have lived well. And I think in all those tough days of dealing with juveniles that are at risk in the tough situations, social workers on a daily basis from one minute to the next, that service, you folks are living well. And we appreciate what you do for everyone in Onslow County. And as I've said it several times, our greatest resource are our youth, and working with them and improving their lives is of utmost importance for our future here. Arts Council, thank you. Appreciate you coming out tonight. Arts makes a major difference in the world, and just walk into any school in Onslow County and you'll see kids getting after it and enjoying life with their arts and keeping them in school and involved. Thanks, everybody coming out tonight. Appreciate it, and have a safe trip home.
Thank you. Commissioner Knapp?
Just a couple things I want to reiterate to Heidi, Sherry, and Angela. Great job at social services. You guys do an outstanding job. I know it's tiring and it gets you down at times, but you just keep on plugging. And I can't say enough about our social workers, because I know what you guys go through, and it is tough. Kathleen and Reverend Churchwell, keep doing what you're doing to JCPC and keep doing what you're doing at the Child Advocacy Center. I mean, your dedication and what you do for our children is just second to none. And I know that from firsthand experience on the care and the passion that you have to fulfill your job and to get to the truth in certain cases. So, I applaud both of y'all for your efforts and everything that you do for the community. And Mr. White, is it? Arts Council? I know Catherine there. Let me tell you about Catherine. She is a talented artist. I've seen her work firsthand. In fact, I think I'm wearing part of her artwork on my arm. She's also a tattoo artist, but I've seen some of her paintings, and I've seen the love of art that she has. I've seen you out there. She's just wonderful, and I can't say enough. I appreciate you guys coming up here today. I do plan on getting with you this week so that we can go, I can take a tour and see some of the additional artwork. That'd be great, because you are talented, superbly talented. So, other than that, the last thing, I had a chance to talk to Sherry, and we got an update on the Detox Crisis Center, and we're just one step away now. We're almost done, and we already had the ribbon cutting. We'll have our facility manned here very soon in the very near future. And what I like about talking with Sherry and talking with David, you know, they're visionaries. They already have this plan, and they're already moving to the next step, looking at long-term treatment and some type of partnership. And I can't, that means a lot to me, the fact you guys step out on that vision. So, congratulations. I'm excited, and I know the county's excited to get this center up and running. Thank you all for coming out tonight, and have a safe trip home, and we'll see you next time.
Commissioner Price?
I'd also like to thank our social workers. Oftentimes, they deal with people in some of the moments in their lives when they find most challenging, and so I can understand that there's an emotional response that comes from that. It could be a positive thing, and sometimes it may be a negative thing, and you guys have to deal with that. So, I appreciate what you do. And also, I'd like to thank JCPC for being here this evening as well. In addition, I'd like to thank Cooperative Extension for putting on the Onslow County Agricultural Awards. Onslow County and farmers, farmers do a lot for Onslow County. It's a big part of our economic movement and economy as a whole, rather. And so, they recognize some of those that had exemplary yields in the area of wheat. The individual that had the highest yield there was Mr. Donnie Riggs. The individual that had the highest corn yield was Mr. Barry Shepherd. And the master farmer was Mr. Maurice Brinson. So, I wanted to recognize those individuals and thank our farmers for all that they do. I don't know if there's a direct correlation, but they always have good food at farm events as well. So, appreciate them. Also, I'd like to thank the Daily News and WITN 7. Each ran an article or a segment on some of the challenges that Onslow County faces in the area of the volunteer fire departments. They cited data that said that we had 200 fewer volunteer firemen now than we had 10 years ago. We can't continue on that sort of trend line. If we do, we're going to be in trouble with our insurance rates and providing fire service for this county. And so, I appreciated them drawing attention to that and urging people to join their volunteer fire departments, and we appreciate what they do, because that is a vital service to Onslow County and something that we are constantly looking at and trying to project where we might be in the future and what we might need to do in the future, and it's very important. And I just appreciated those articles and those segments being on the news, because it kind of got my attention, and I hope it got other people's attention as well. And other than that, thank you. Have a good evening.
Commissioner Shanahan?
Congratulations, Lori, and thank you for all you do for us. And thank you, Mr. White, for being here, and everyone from the Arts Council. You guys perform a great impact in our community, and it would be a shame to lose that, so let's keep the conversation going. All right? Thank you, guys. Good night.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chairman Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree. I want to thank everybody for, and they got the proclamations tonight. We appreciate what you do. Also, thank Mr. White and the Arts Council for being here and giving us an update. Senior Services and Friends of the Aging gave a great banquet on Friday night. We enjoyed that. I appreciate what they do to serve our aging population. And I want to mention that we, almost every meeting now, we've got property that we're selling and putting back on the tax records. We embarked on this about two years ago, well, right after we were elected in '16, with the intent of collecting back taxes and getting these surplus properties off of our tax, off of our inventory and back on the tax roll. And you're seeing the results of that now. We're putting more back on the tax roll every two weeks, $28,000, like the Chairman said tonight. And if you've watched the agendas, those values just keep going up. All that's good for the people in Onslow County who are paying their property taxes. Also, make note of the contract project ordinances that we approved amendments to tonight. Every one of them was a reduction from the original proposed price. So, I have to thank our county manager and our staff for reining in those costs and doing what they can to save taxpayer money in Onslow County. Thank everybody for being here tonight. Hope you have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Not much to say after six people in front of you. But I will say this. I want to recognize Reverend Churchwell. He's former school board member. He does everything. He's also YMCA board member, and I think a charter member too, if I'm not mistaken. And thank you for working over there, too. That's a vital part of our community now, and it's an up-and-coming organization that I think will benefit Onslow County. The Arts Council, thank you folks for being here and speaking and letting us know where you are, and let us know that you're interested in doing better. And you're talking about getting a hit. Well, Onslow County got quite a hit, too. About $500 million worth. So, everybody's in the same boat with that. Commissioner Bennett said we sold some property tonight for $28,000. But next agenda item, we spent all of it, so we're back in the hole again. So, anyway, thank you all for coming tonight. Steve Myers, thank you for being here from Onslow County Schools. Appreciate your participation, and I'm sure folks that see some of the board members or some of the Board of Education people come in, they'll, you know, know that you're here and interested in county government. So, we're going to have to work together to bring things together with this budget year with so much damage and so many needs for the school. So, thank you for being here, too. Other than that, I say good night to you. Have a safe trip home. Entertainer motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That didn't take long.[1760.91][1760.91](MUSIC)